I thought. I know you told me that. I know, and I I'm super happy. Every time I wear it now, I think of you that day. That's pretty funny. I'm like, I'm so damn happy. I thought I'd work today. We'll walk you through that.
We have everybody here tonight, right? Yep. Oh, Kyle. I didn't do it. It needs new shock absorbers. Good evening and welcome to tonight's Monroe City Council meeting. This is the regular study session meeting for Tuesday, October 18th, 2022. The time right now is 7:00 PM. Our clerk, Jody Wykoff, clerk Wykoff, will please call the roll. One moment and go.
Council members present and establishing a quorum are council members Foulter, Kenny Hanford, Davis, Gamble, and Scarborough.
Thank you. And we heard from council member Fisher, I think, yesterday. He has a work matter that he's having to attend to. So unless there's objection, we will consider his absence as excused this evening. Seeing no objection, we'll go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda. That item will be pledge of allegiance. Council member Hanford, will you please lead us on the pledge? Thank you. Next item on the agenda is public's comments. This is a time set aside for members of the public to speak to the city council on any issue related to the city of Monroe, except any quasi judicial matter that is subject to a public hearing. Three minutes are afforded to each speaker. If you would like to speak this evening, please go ahead and raise your hand if you are here in the audience. Or raise your hand if you're in the Zoom meeting. If you're on a phone, you can hit star nine. Is there anybody that would like to speak this evening? All right. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda. And that's a public hearing. This is item number 5.1, public hearing for the 2023-2024 revenue sources and 2023-2024 recommended biennial budget. And this presentation will be done by our finance director, Becky Hassert. Director Hassert, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So basically, for those of you, and I believe all of you were here last week, the slides are exactly the same, so my presentation would be the same. And given looking at who is in the audience, I think what I will do tonight, since we have the big budget presentation tonight as well, is just make myself available, Mr. Mayor. If there are questions on the information that has been presented before.
All right. Thank you very much. Council members, is there a question for Director Hassert for any motion? I'm sorry, we're gonna go ahead and we're gonna open up the public hearing first. Are there any questions for for Director Hassert? All right. Seeing none, we're gonna go ahead and open up the public hearings. Is there anybody this evening that would like to speak to this item? If so, please raise your hand if you're in the audience. Greg's not putting his hand up. And if you are in the participants list, please raise your virtual hand. Again, that's star nine if you're on the phone. All right. Seeing none, we're gonna go ahead and move back to the council. Council, any questions for Director Hassert, or is there a motion? And council member Foulter, go ahead then.
I'm going, okay, good. There it is. I am moving, I move to close the public testimony portion of the public hearing.
I have a count, I have a council meeting motion. Okay. Let's try that again. I have a motion from council member Foulter. A second from council member Scarborough for the request into action, item number one, to close the public testimony portion of the public hearing in Agenda Bill 5.1. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, we'll move to vote. All in favor? All opposed? Abstentions. Motion passes 6-0. Thank you. I turn to council. Council member Scarborough, go ahead.
Yes, I moved to close the public hearing.
I have a motion from council member Scarborough, a second from council member Hanford for the requested action number two in Agenda Bill number 5.1 for public hearing. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we'll move to vote. All in favor? All opposed? Abstentions. Motion passes 6-0. Thank you very much. We're gonna go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda. That item will be under item six, consent agenda. And I turn to council. Council member Kenny, go ahead.
I move to approve the consent agenda as provided in the packet.
I have a motion from council member Kenny, a second from council member Hanford for approving the consent agenda. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we'll move to vote. All in favor? All opposed? Abstentions. Motion passes 6-0. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is council member reports. We'll go ahead and start on the end there with council member Scarborough. Any report this evening?
Nothing to report this evening.
Thank you. Council member Fisher is not here. Council member Hanford.
Thank you, Mayor. It's good to be back in town and good to see you all again. Thank you.
You too. Thank you. Council member Kenny, go ahead.
Uh, nothing for me tonight.
Thank you. Council member Foulter, go ahead.
I did have a person come over and ask me when they would not be waking up to jackhammers anymore on North Lakely. So I was wondering, or in that area, you know, whatever that project is over there. So wondering if you could give us a, I, you know, I'll wait my turn, but that's my question.
All right. I'll turn to our Public Works Director, Jacob Roberts. Director Roberts, do you have anything to add on that particular project this evening?
Am I good?
Yes, you're red, which means you're good.
Yeah, we hope to be in the paving stages, so the reconstructing stages shortly. So I'd say late fall, early winter, get a get a lift down. So that would mean the majority of the noise would be done by then. So.
I told him the noise probably meant it was coming to an end. So anyway.
We're getting, we're getting close, maybe a month.
Awesome. I was just, I was telling him to go to bed earlier.
You do what you need to do.
Thank you, Director Roberts. Council member Foulter, anything further?
No, I'm good. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. Council member Davis, go ahead.
Nothing to report.
All right. Thank you. Council member Gamble, go ahead.
I'm just about done with this smoke. That's all I got.
I agree with you.
So I'm looking forward to this, uh, the rain that's coming. Yes, it's supposed to be for a good week, but also just throw it there. It's actually gonna be in Snohomish, but the Monroe High School football team is playing for the Wesco Three Lakes South Championship on Friday. So the game's in Snohomish covered, so it's raining, no big deal. And I believe it also will be on, if you can't make it, STPSN, which is, you go to the YouTube channel, you can watch it. Snohomish High School. Yeah. So, thanks, Seven, if I'm not mistaken. Yeah. If you can't make it, go to YouTube, STPSN, and it should be a live broadcast, which if you've got Xfinity, you can through, do it through your box at home. Show me YouTube.
All right.
They are, they're undefeated. So, good stuff.
Thank you very much, Council member Gamble. We're now going to move to the staff and department reports. We've got human resources and IT reports, and that'll be coming. That'll be coming from Ben. And so, go ahead.
We're hiring people and fixing things? That's the end of my report?
No. On there, there is one important anniversary. Detective Sergeant Barry Hatch, this month has been here 24 years. So if you've ever got a chance to sit and talk with Barry, he's had quite an interesting background with the Monroe Police Department. He's been on the smart team, he's been on the SWAT team, he's obviously been, you know, investigations for a long time. So congratulations to Barry for being here for 24 years. We've onboarded some other individuals this, since the last report that I'm going off by memory. Kevin Price is in code enforcement. He started last month. Rachel Adams started on Monday. And then we are parks, maintenance workers, name is Matthew Young, who was a seasonal here before. So that's all I have.
All right. Thank you very much, Director Worthen. Any questions for our Director Worthen? All right. Seeing none, we're gonna go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda. That will be mayor and administrative reports. So I'll turn to our city administrator, Deborah Knight. Administrator Knight, go ahead.
Thank you. So looking at the extended agenda for next Tuesday's meeting, our P3 committee meeting has been canceled. So enjoy your evening off. For the regular business meeting, under announcements and presentations, just a reminder that we will have representatives, Gainer and Steele from the 12th Legislative District will be here. There is also a ribbon cutting that evening at the Chain Lake Road at 4:30 as well. So if you're interested in attending that, and then we will have dinner served starting at 5:30 in the Mont CC with our representatives. So if you thought you had to rush off to the P3 committee meeting, you now have more time available to meet with our representatives. On the consent agenda, we have our regular accounts payable, our meeting minutes, and then a police drone purchase agreement, and a motion to add the business meeting and allow action on November 1st. So changing that from a study session to a business meeting. We will have a public hearing on the 2023-2024 budget, and then Monroe Municipal Code 22.12 definitions, that's for the Unified Development Regulations with Anita Marrero. Under new business, a lot of items related to the budget. First reading of the ordinance setting property tax levy. First reading of the ordinance adopting the budget. First reading of the ordinance adopting the six-year capital facilities plan. And then lodging tax advisory committee appointments with Rich Hebner. Under unfinished business, we have a resolution to amend the Community Human Services Advisory Board membership. I'll be providing that update. And then reports from finance, community development, and police. For the following meeting then, on November 1st, we will have a public safety committee meeting that evening discussing WASPAC accreditation and civil protection orders.
Council member Gamble, go ahead.
Yeah, but yeah, I will be absent on the 11/1. I'm out of town those two weeks. So I see you got to reflect it right on the first one, but
okay.
Just wanted to make sure that was called out.
Okay, well, we'll reflect that on 11/1 as well.
Thanks.
Thank you.
And then at 6:30 PM, we will be having a reception to recognize our board and commission members. So if you have an opportunity to come at 6:30, that would be, that would be lovely. We're wanting to give them a reception with light refreshments and then just recognizing our board and commission members for the service to our community. Then we have, under announcements and presentations, a presentation from the Snohomish Health District. And just to let council know, Snohomish County is actually in the process of absorbing the health district into the county. So we will be coming back to you, I believe it's at that same meeting or the following meeting, with a couple of agreements between the cities and the county, a relationship to some assets that the district had. And then finally, new business, government relations contracts with Mr. Hebner. Under discussion, proposed amendments to council rules of procedure, and then reports from finance, HR, and IT, and community development, and police.
All right. Thank you. Any, any questions on the extended agenda? All right. Thank you. Go ahead.
Then for the city administrator reports, a number of the same items really just related to calendaring, we've gone over, I think, all of those previously, with the exception that there is the Snohomish County Chamber of Commerce Mega Mixer. Again, an opportunity to talk with our business owners and business owners from around Snohomish County. That's at the Monroe School Admin Building and starts at 5:30. And then I believe the next slide is mine, too. Earlier in the day, our Public Works Director Jacob Roberts sent out an email just alerting council that Republic Services are, garbage rates are set to increase. The good news is, it's not by much. And I think that that's really remarkable, kind of given the expenses related to gas and diesel and, and other cost of living adjustments. So that, that's good news for the city and good news for our ratepayers as well. So there's a breakdown there of the actual steps that have to take place. The noticing requirements that Republic has, and then the effective date of that would be January 1st of 2023.
Thank you. Any questions for Administrator Knight? Anything else?
Nope, that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor's reports, we did continue the interviews for Government Affairs firms last week. We also had a kickoff meeting with the, with J-Ray, the company that is working on the branding process, and had our senior leadership team meeting last week, just a lot of really good things happening here in our community, and you all know that. So I think that's all I have to report for myself this evening. And oh, I do want to underscore from the extended agenda that November 1st, please do your best to be here at 6:30 if you can. We will be recognizing our boards and commission members who are either volunteer or have a very small stipend associated with their service if they're a planning commissioner. And I think it would just be great if council members could be here to sort of mix around and and thank our board and commission members and advisory committee members for the work that they're doing. So thank you all. All right. We're gonna go ahead and move on now to item 10.1. This is a 2023-2024 recommended biennial budget presentation and discussion. And before I hand things over to our finance director Hassert, I'm just gonna say a few words. One, this is our first biennial budget. Our staff did a really great job. So this would be Director Hassert and Greg Pollard?
Peeland.
Peeland, sorry. Did a really great job of Highland. It's all good. Move, move to strike the last 15 seconds of the Zoom meeting. Is there a second? Is there a second for, for Mr. Hebner? Okay.
Sorry.
At least we have fun, right?
He's gonna be sorry he came tonight.
Welcome to your first budget. So our finance team did a really great job putting together a framework that the directors then worked with the staff to put, to fill in all the blanks and everything. I requested that, as always, if they bring forward their, what has been called Burfs, which is budget enhancement request forms with requested changes to the budget. But we always start with the idea that we're gonna have a status quo, plus whatever we forecast in terms of contractual obligations like COLA and things like that. And we received all the material. The staff did a really great job of forecasting what their end of year balances would be for 2022, and then went about the, the work and analysis of figuring out 2023 and also 2024. Had a great conversation with Director Hassert and Administrator Knight, just going over what all of that meant. And, and just sort of figuring out what it, you know, what it's gonna take for us to be in balance. And the budget that you have before you today, the recommended, the mayor's recommended budget is a result of a lot of collaboration with me, with the staff, and the senior leadership team. You'll see a lot of things in there that you, you already know about, because what we're doing is we're meeting the policies of the council. We are taking, I don't wanna say a conservative approach, we're taking an approach in revenue that is assuming that sort of mid-low range as opposed to a mid or a mid-high range. It's something that we've normally done in the past, just, just going through and doing sort of a status quo approach. We don't know what the future is gonna bring in the next biennium. We do know that labor costs are going up with the roughly 10% CPI. And so these sorts of things played into a lot of the decision making that formed the recommendation that you have here today. We used Imagine Monroe in the work that we did to make certain that Imagine Monroe doesn't just sit on a shelf, but it reflects what your priorities are in terms of strengthening community and strengthening meeting places and making, you know, making certain that we're doing everything else that's part of Imagine Monroe. You'll see in there, the contingency and the reserves are fully funded. Our interfund transfers for, you know, for rates and everything, for IT fleet facilities, those sorts of things are, are fully funded. And yeah, I think that we've done a great job meeting what we think the council's expectations are, while at the same time addressing those higher priority concerns that we needed to from, you know, from an operations and service delivery standpoint. So I know you all know that we've got a great staff, very dedicated. They, you know, ask the right questions. They are willing to share their concerns with me, which I really appreciate, so that we can go back and look at things again and just had a really great budget process as we brought forward this biennium budget. You know, the recommended biennium budget from the mayor and from, you know, in collaboration with the staff. So I think that's all I'd like to add this evening, and we'll go ahead and ask Director Hassert to lead us through the slides. So thank you. Burf, budget enhancement request form.
No, that was, so originally it was budget enhancement request form, and a former no. That inadvertently happened with budget amendments. So, yes. An unfortunate acronym, but maybe appropriate. I don't know.
And that came from a former employee? Is that what you were saying?
Yes.
Can you guess?
Director was the one that came up with the acronym, and I was like shocked. Might have to change it around.
All right. So let me go ahead and shift cameras around before team starts telling me that I have the wrong cameras going. And Director Hassert, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And after all of that, I kind of feel like you've just got the budget presentation. But that's okay. We'll see if we can keep you guys awake tonight. So let me start the slideshow. And you will notice, for those of you who like the pictures on the slides, that there are some new pictures in there. So so we are tonight here to talk about the biennial budget 2023-24. And as the mayor mentioned, we did build this around Imagine Monroe. So just a quick reminder, the, the main tenants of Imagine Monroe, accessible parks and healthy waterways, building community, creating connections, supporting local, friendly and responsive, and ensuring a safe place. And just for those that have not been here in prior years when I have done budget presentations, you will also see throughout the slides that there are page number references, those reference back to the budget book that can be found on the city's website. So if you are interested in going and reading further, that's, that this is the reference here. So one of the things that we like to highlight in each of the budgets is the partnerships that we have with other organizations. The Monroe Boys and Girls Club. And keep in mind, everything that we are talking about now is a two-year period. So they, they do rent the land that their building sits on from us for $2 for every biennium, as does the Monroe Food Bank and the Monroe Community Senior Center. We have talked about in the public hearings, the embedded social worker program that is a partnership with Snohomish County, where we share the costs of that particular full-time equivalent position. We are actually receiving contributions from Snohomish County with regards to the SR2 or the US2 shared path that you guys have been seeing is, is now under construction. They are a partner in that as well. And then, of course, our SR522 and US2 coalitions, as we continue to work with the county and other partners on those items. In addition, this budget does include our $30,000 for the biennium to help support the senior center with their senior bus program. There is approximately $50,000, and we say approximately because our contract with the school, this Monroe School District, for the school resource officer, the school district pays 75% of the officer's salary and benefits. We pay the other 25%, and that can change depending on the officer that is assigned to that. We do have $5,000 in here for our dues for Economic Alliance Snohomish County. I know that the council has been good about taking advantage of some of those programs. So and then we talked about ARPA in the public hearing. There's $240,000 over the biennium for economic development assistance that is being paid for with the city's ARPA allocation, as well as $300,000 towards human services assistance. And we don't yet know who those recipients will be, because they will be done through a war process. So assumptions that were used in the budget. So, and a lot of these, again, will sound familiar, because we've talked about this with the public hearings. But the June-over-June CPIU was 10.1%. And as a point of comparison, last year it was 5.5. And as the mayor mentioned at the beginning of this, the discussion tonight, that does play into a lot of our collective bargaining agreements. And we are a service agency. I know you guys have heard me mention that before. And as is expected with the service agency, one of our largest costs is personnel. And that's just the reality of who we are. The September implicit price deflator is something we also pay attention to for property taxes in the state of Washington, especially if you are a city of 10,000 or higher in population. You are limited as to how much you can adjust your property taxes each year by either 1% or the IPD, whichever is lower. Of course, this year, the IPD is much higher than 1%, so that doesn't really, the IPD doesn't really come into play. But it's also a good indicator of what, what inflation looks like out there in the broader economy. We are continuing to see supply chain challenges, and we expect that to continue for a little while. Our expectation, there are two more Federal Reserve meetings before the end of the year. Our expectation is the Federal Reserve will continue to raise interest rates as they're trying to combat inflation. The national economic slowdown, we know that that has local impacts, and we took that into account as well. The Monroe Correctional Facility has been closing units. That affects our population, and we do have some revenues that we receive based on per capita. So we took that into account, you know, and it's also there, one of our larger utility buyers for sewer and water. So that then also affects not only our revenue to those utilities, but then the, the related utility taxes that go to the general fund. And then I mentioned the population, OFM has us decreasing from 19,900 to 19,700. With that, we are looking at around 180 housing starts over the next biennium. That came out of a very, very robust meeting with the community development director, as well as our city engineer. They talked to their staffs, got information on what they're hearing on the street from the construction crews, and they are expecting a slowdown in the number of permits that we will be issuing over the next couple of years, despite the number of lots that have been created. Our water, sewer, and stormwater rates are adjusted per the resolution that was adopted by council a few years ago. Water rates, we are still anticipating 3%. It's actually pretty good considering CPI is 10.1. The stormwater rate adjustment is scheduled to be 10% for 2023 and 2024. That is a decrease from the 12.5% that it was increased in 2020. And then sewer, again, we are recommending no adjustment to the sewer rate. The preliminary assessed value for new construction, when we were putting together the proposed budget, we anticipated 30 million. And then we are recommending utilizing 241,000 in baked property tax capacity, and we will talk about that in a little more detail as we go through it. And then I mentioned the American Rescue Plan Act funds earlier. The, the second tranche that we received in June 2022 is being utilized, the bulk of that is being utilized by the city to help us bridge this last year of recovery from COVID mitigation, and that is factored into the budget as well. And Mr. Mayor, if it's okay, I'll pause after each slide, just in case.
Sounds great. So council members, if you have any questions, go ahead and hit your microphone, and then at the end of each slide, I'll call on you. Any questions on this slide or so far? Thank you. Go ahead.
I mentioned the American Rescue Plan Act. We are still, though, going to do some awards. I mentioned earlier, the Economic Development Assistance Awards to the total of $240,000 over the biennium. Human Services Assistance Awards, 300,000. You can see we have the Public Defender Embedded Social Worker that has been grant-funded both last year and then for a portion of it this year. We will still receive another 11,000 in grant for 2023, but the actual contract is 12,200. So we are using the ARP money to help make up that difference in '23 and to continue the program into '24. The embedded social worker as well is being, we're using the ARP money for that. The Monroe Bus, the senior bus, completing the Brandy Consulting Contract, that has always been ID to be paid for with the city's portion that we were keeping of ARP money. That is a contract that council has already approved. And that is something that falls under the economic development umbrella of what we're trying to do here in the city. And then, of course, we have some community relations training. This is CHSAB supported. It has to do with.
Trauma informed.
Thank you. I just drew a blank on that for a moment. So. But this is what we are anticipating. These are specific programs that are highlighted to be paid for with ARP money.
Yes, Councilmember Kenny, go ahead.
Just have a question about the community relations training. Is this for staff?
Yes.
Yeah, this is training that the Community Human Service Advisory Board was recommending for staff. So it includes a couple of different items. It includes being able to relate to individuals that are coming into City Hall for Services. And then also the way that we're relating to customers out in the field as well. So it is a combined program covering a couple of different topic areas.
And the trauma-informed element is from the police department, if I remember correctly. So is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Has the program already been purchased or identified or is this just funding and then we're going to?
Exactly. So it'll be funding, we'll go out and. Do a request for proposal process. So it'll come back through council then for approval.
Okay, thank you.
Your book.
Go ahead.
So again, we talked about during the public hearings, the debt issuance, there is $36.9 million in scheduled debt. Over the next two years, 16 million of that is earmarked for the wastewater treatment plant. That has to do with the biosolids conversion that we are doing out there and that has been scheduled for a while. It does fit into, you know, as those especially on the finance committee know. We also maintain a six-year utility model. And we have that all plugged in and it works as it is supposed to in there while still maintaining our healthy debt debt service coverage. So it's now time to start issuing that debt. We have 2 million scheduled for water capital as well as 2 million for stormwater capital. I don't go into the details on what specific capital that is because I know my esteemed colleague here will be talking about CFP here after I'm done with budget. So we'll leave that for him. And then, of course, the phase two of the municipal campus project, we are anticipating a maximum not to exceed 16.9 million. For debt service for that. If council remembers, we were in front of you back earlier this summer talking about that debt and not only the debt, but how we would be able to pay for it. And everything that we are projecting in this budget is we are still on track for that. So. The utility portion that's associated with the phase two of the project will be paid for by the utilities. And again, that was all factored into the rate model. So. General government portion is paid for with the real estate excise taxes, the first quarter percent. And I know for those of you that have been with us for a while, you know, I always talk about the art, the RCWs are very specific about what you can and cannot spend. Real estate excise taxes on. So that is not money that's available for our operations. And then we did talk about earlier this summer that if we did go down this path. We wanted to have a target of a minimum two, if not three years worth of debt service. In a reserve in the Fund 330, the capital, building capital fund. And at the end of this biennium, we will actually have two and a half years of debt reserve in there. So total budget for two years, not quite 200 million. We couldn't quite break that mark. I don't know if it'll be a good thing or not when we do.
We don't need to.
Again, you will find this beginning on page 19 in the budget book. It's kind of nice to see the graph and see the different categories and how that all plays out. Balanced budget, of course, revenues equal expenditures. And our targeted ending fund balance, as the mayor alluded to earlier, includes that all the reserves are fully funded. And here, this is just the individual numbers for the depart, for both the revenue side and the expenditure side. So highlights and a lot of these you can find in the mayor's message, pages two through four and was also attached to this agenda bill. This budget does create accessible parks and healthy waterways by increasing the number of park seasonal workers. You know, when we talk about, when we get to the point to talk about the big capacity. That we're suggesting utilizing, it does pay to add two additional seasonal workers. To the number that we try to hire every year. It supports local businesses by continuing to install our wayfinding signs to direct visitors and residents to North Kelsey, the downtown and the Frylands. It supports our efforts to improve capacity on both US2 and SR522. There is money in the budget to conduct the annual business survey so that we can continue to stay in touch with our small businesses in town. And it supports business recovery with the 240,000 in business assistance awards that I mentioned earlier that is supported by the ARP money. It also partners with our nonprofit agencies to serve our most vulnerable residents. I mentioned again, the $240,000. And or 300,000, I'm sorry, for human services awards. The funding for the full-time human services coordinator, the embedded social worker, and of course, the continued support for the community court. Continues our development of city parks and trail systems. Again, that's part of the capital facilities plan that we'll be talking about here next after I'm done. And it invests in the health of our first responders. You know, we talked about the trauma care. Training earlier as well as part of the use of the bank capacity to to have some in-house mental health care for our first responders. It invests in staff and you know, and community training. Again, I think we've already talked about that. Fully funds all of our reserves, supports our capital projects. I mentioned the 36.9 million in scheduled debt issuance. And improved service delivery. The mayor alluded to earlier, this is, this is pretty much a status quo budget. However, we do have three positions that we want to highlight. One of which is our current public records officer who is part-time. This budget does recommend making that position full-time. They were in front of you here a few meetings ago, talking about the the number of public records requests we continue to receive. And as you know, there are some pretty stiff binds associated with that if we ever miss those deadlines. It creates a public works customer service coordinator. That does not have impact to the general fund. It is paid for by the utilities and the street fund. To help again, as we continue to do our outreach with our residents. We do start here about more and more things that we need to be able to address in a timely manner. So it's that friendly and responsive. Under Imagine Monroe. And then, of course, establishing an environmental compliance officer. That one's actually scheduled in the second year of the biennium. And that is also tied to our requirements for the MPDES permit. Which is, I mean, we have no choice about that. So. And again, no impact to the general fund with that position. So just real quickly, these next couple of slides I'll go through. Again, the page numbers are there. And staff is here if there's questions about a particular project. But we wanted to at least list out the capital projects that are funded for the next two years. Again, Mr. Roberts will be talking about the six-year capital plan. At some point, though, we have to find funding for those items. So for general government, as you can see, there's the purchase of the whole, the holding cell cameras and recording equipment. Drug enforcement equipment. There's various improvements to the police station. Until we get to phase three, where we can actually do the wholesale remodel, we still have to maintain the building that we have. Building F improvements, that's at the public workshop. Then, you know, I mentioned the big one there, the phase two, municipal campus. And then there's security fencing and a gate opener. You know, if we're going to invest in these assets, we need to also secure them. So. For parks, there we have the money in there to do and continue the equipment updates at Blueberry Playground. Every year we put a certain amount of money in there for various park play facility equipment. That's usually dictated by the information that we receive through the PROS Plan. And then there's trail planning and repair as well. And again, all of that supports Imagine Monroe. Streets Capital, Powell Street. I know that that's something that has been presented to council earlier this year. That is scheduled to to break ground here in the next couple of months, I believe. Okay, maybe not. I already got my staff members name wrong, so you know. We have the signal over by the hospital, the Monroe Transportation Benefit District Road Improvements Overlay Preservation. That's something the TBD has already approved their budget. So we do know up to how much we can ask for, you know, reimbursement from the TBD for scheduled projects. The 179 sidewalk improvement, the wayfinding signs we mentioned earlier, traffic calming and of course, the North Madison improvements. It's also tied to some sewer improvements as well.
Councilmember Kenny, go ahead.
Have a question about the 179 sidewalk improvements. Are these going to address some of the issues that these residents brought forth a few weeks ago in public comment?
Go ahead, Director Roberts.
Some of them, yes. So those sidewalk improvements are primarily on the west side of the road. And it's really to establish one continuous path of sidewalk from the the southernmost point by the school to the 150, down to 154th. So it fills in the gaps. We've had development that occurred over, occurred over the years that have put chunks out there and we've got some grants. This will be the final piece on that side.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Scarborough. Go ahead.
Jacob, will that appease those people's concerns?
I'm not sure I can answer that, Councilmember Scarborough. I, it will help. Certainly, every safety improvement makes a difference in a community and in a smaller kind of a sub-community of a community, right? We're also working on traffic calming with that group right now. So we've sent them the kind of community portion, their direction. And we're working on the city portion as well. We've collected data and are working the process right now.
So we are looking at traffic calming improvements on 179.
Yes.
And that's what they asked for. That's, I would say more specifically what they asked for. I didn't hear them asking for sidewalk continuation. Or were they?
I thought they mentioned sidewalks.
They may have mentioned sidewalks. I don't recall. I took quite a few notes, but. Okay, well, it will help with both those things then. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Kenny, go ahead.
I just, for the record, wanted to state that they did mention sidewalks and I think that this is a great improvement. We also hear from a lot of students. Walking to Park Place and teachers to school. And this has been just a long-awaited. Improvement. So it's really good news. But yeah, that will help because they had two issues. One was the sidewalks and safe pathway to school. And the second was the speeding and general safety issues on that stretch. So, yeah, thank you.
All right. Anything further on this slide? All right. And Director Hassert, please continue.
Streets, the Public Works is going to be very busy over the next biennium. So here's the remainder of the street projects. You guys don't need me to read each one to you, but I will take a moment if you guys want to read through in case there are any questions. Okay. And then I mentioned water improvements, sewer improvements, stormwater, the usual fleet and equipment replacement. Again, they're all listed out in the capital facilities plan. So I will leave that for Director Roberts when we get there. So. Yes, the bulk of that 20, 20 million, though, is the wastewater treatment plant. That's the need for the bonds. So. So general fund is the one everybody likes to talk about.
Just a second, Director.
So, sorry.
Councilmember Scarborough, go ahead.
Yeah, Jacob has. Have we communicated to those people or that we are working on the. Traffic calming devices and the sidewalks?
Yes, primarily we've communicated with the gentleman who brought the group. His name is Eric Pedersen. Emailed him actually at the end of last week.
Anything further, council? All right, please continue.
So general fund, again, here's the usual pie chart and the listing of the revenues based on category. If you remember during the public hearing, we we broke the taxes down into the three main groups. Property tax, sales taxes and utility taxes. And we will be talking about property taxes here shortly in a little bit more detail. And we're at property taxes. You will notice the change in the formatting on the slides. These next few slides are the exact same slides that were in the public hearing. So I didn't, I wanted to be able to show it's the same information. But again, property taxes, although we are now doing a biennial budget, must be adopted annually. So when we bring the property tax ordinance to you next week for first reading, it will reference just 2023. It is our second largest revenue to the general fund. And then I mentioned earlier that we were estimating 30 million in new construction. We actually did receive the preliminary estimates from the county after we had put the budget together and it came in at 80, over $83 million. It made about $30,000 difference. So it's really not that much when you think about how much our rate per thousand will be. Our annexation assessment will come in at about $177 million. And then currently we have 331,825 in baked capacity. So again, just a reminder, when you pay your property taxes to the county in 2022, if you lived within the city and within the Monroe School District. For every dollar you paid, city received 10.94 cents of that dollar. The property taxes you pay actually support a number of different jurisdictions, number of different services. The city's portion, though, as I mentioned, is just shy of 11%. So when we think, we projected what the property taxes would be for 2023. We start with what our current levy is because that is the automatic that we can get each year. We add the amount that we think we are going to realize from new construction. And then because we had the annexation complete this last year, we also add that amount in. That gives us a subtotal of what our new basis for property taxes. And then I mentioned earlier, the the recommendation to use $241,063 of our bank capacity. So our total property taxes that we projected for 2023 is just over $3.9 million. And I mentioned again, if by using that 241,000, it still leaves a little, little under $91,000 in bank capacity. Just to show you, because the question always comes up, well, what kind of impact would that be to our property taxpayers? If your property has a value of $600,000. The impact of using that bank capacity comes to around $31.45 for the year or $2.62 per month. And just a reminder, our reserve policy that was adopted by resolution does state that whenever we can, we want to use ongoing revenue sources. To pay for programs that are going to have ongoing costs. And so bank capacity is an ongoing revenue source. And then I mentioned earlier, here are the specifics that we are recommending using the bank capacity for. We have, you know, I mentioned earlier, converting the public records position from part-time to full-time. And this is the cost difference. The annual maintenance cost for the holding cell cameras, the audio recording capabilities. And just a reminder, that is an unfunded state mandate. I mean, we do have to get those cameras and that recording capability. We got to find a way then to maintain all that data. Continuing the mental health provider contract for public or for the police department. They were wonderful in being able to secure a grant through the Washington State Chiefs Association. However, there's no guarantee that we will be able to continue to get grants. And it's, it's actually been a very successful program from what I understand. So. And then again, the human services coordinator position, council did approve that position from going from contract to FTE during the 2022 budget amendment. But at that time, it was approved to be a temporary position. And the request now is to make it a permanent position.
And Director Hassert, I don't know if I blinked out for a second, but there was also the two five-month park seasonal positions.
Yes, I think I skipped right over that. My apologies, Mike. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
So again, this is a graph or a table that, for those of you that I know have read the budget page to page every year, will recognize. We do put in there just to show historically what happens to our rate per thousand that we collect each year for property taxes. It is a inverse relationship with our assessed value. Back in 2013, the rate per thousand that we were collecting was $1.46. Because our assessed values have been increasing, it does not mean the amount of property taxes people pay increased because the rate per thousand went down accordingly. So what we are looking at for 2023 is preliminary estimates. If we don't use the bank capacity, our rate per thousand that we would be collecting is, drops down to 80 cents. If we do collect, include the bank capacity, we're looking at 85 cents for every $1,000 the property is worth. And this is just the, the table that I always include to show the true up of that. If your assessed value went up the 27.7% on average, we don't take big capacity. The pennies that you see there for the difference between the two years is due to rounding. I only go out two decimal places, but the county actually goes out, I want to say five or seven decimal places, so. But the, the amount, and this is just on the city's portion, so that 10% of the property tax bill. Some people will still see increases in their property tax bills. That's assuming that the other jurisdictions take their full allowed capacity, so. Oops, I went the wrong way, sorry. So again, just to show you the difference. And this time, instead of 900,000, 600,000, I used 800 and 500, because that's what we used last year in the budget book. But you can see what the yearly difference would be if we do utilize the bank capacity. So we talked about revenue. Here are your categories, your cost centers for expenditures. Again, that's begins on page 34, 35 in the budget book. Reminder, this is the first biennial budget. So the history that you see on this chart is annual. As we start having more biennial budgets under our belt, it'll be easier to compare year over year. Not that it is the most elegant solution, but for those that are into data, I would say your best bet would be to add up the prior two years, kind of take a look at how it compares, so. And you know me, I like my pie charts. And as we include in the budget every year, the six-year forecast, based on what we are recommending in the budget, we always plug that into this model. We use the same assumption and growth factors that had been vetted with council, beginning on page 63, 63 and 64. We talk about what those growth factors are. That's all plugged into this. And it shows you again that we actually don't go into the red here until we get to 2026. And as I always remind you, we expect to be in the red sometime by the third or fourth year. Just because it shows red on this does not mean that's what's going to happen. It just shows that, obviously, we, we do things like economic development. We make adjustments as we need to, so that, you know, if you were a car, you start with a full tank of gas. Eventually, you're going to run out of gas if you don't pull over somewhere and get some more. But if you don't ever leave the driveway, you get nowhere. You can keep a full tank of gas, but then you don't go anywhere. So it's finding that happy medium somewhere. The next few slides, for those that are new to council, we'll just take a moment on each one for you guys to be able to read. And if you have any questions, let us know. The information that's in here can also be found on the pages that we reference. What we have done in the past is, I can sit here and tell you the numbers. What we tell you on the slide is the goals that each cost center and department and fund says that they're going to try and achieve with the budget that if council approves, we do our best. The new item that is in this year's budget book that will also be on the slides is also the anticipated professional services that would be paid for as well in the approved budget. So the first one is non-departmental. And this year, or this biennium, the only transfer that we are recommending at this time is the amount that's needed to go over to the contingency fund to fully fund that particular reserve. Next is executive.
Oh.
This is where they can read, and then if they have questions.
You looked at us.
Nobody prompted me.
She looked right at us like we had something to do.
You're the executive branch. Well, if you weren't abandoning us, and we're going to be here in '23, I would have included you. Finance. I admit I'm tired of looking at this slide. And if I start going too fast, please let me know. And I will start going a little faster, because I know you guys have read the budget. Human Resources. You'll get to see that one again. Police. I do want to get a picture of all you guys together at some point.
I think we took a group photo. I canceled.
I do want to point out, though, that the goals that I have listed on this slide are different. If you compare that to what is on page 46 in the budget book, there was a little bit of update between the two versions. The final budget book will have the corrected information in it. City Clerk and Records. I've got to say, this is one of my favorite pictures. I love this picture. And I do want to point out, the executive, the executive department, while their goals may not have been as extensive as what's on these other slides, they do oversee all of them, so, yeah. They are very busy. Municipal Court. And then Parks CIP. Capital Improvement Plan. Sometimes known as Capital Facilities. Not that this is a challenge, but you guys are being awful quiet. Human Services. Unitary Development. Emergency Management. Not only paid for out of the general fund, but also the three utilities. And then the American Rescue Plan Act. And again, just thought it was important to show what we are funding with that beyond just what the goals are for this department. And then other general fund cost centers. We have legal, jail and dispatch, and our citywide costs that are things like our AWC dues, et cetera, that don't belong in one particular cost center. Contingency Fund. We mentioned earlier that target balance is increasing. The contingency fund is capped by either RCW at 37 and a half cents for every thousand of assessed value in the city, or one month's worth of general fund operational costs, whichever is lower. Until this last year, we were, the lower amount was the 37 and a half cents of assessed value. But given that assessed value this last year grew by an average of 27.7%. And then you add the annexation to it, the 1% general fund operational cost is now the lower amount, which is represented by that $1.5 million. Then the Donations Fund. These are some of the items that we do receive direct donations from. And if anybody is interested in making a donation to the city, definitely talk to your tax advisor. But a lot of those donations can be tax deductible. And every dollar is greatly appreciated. Streets O and M. Thank you. You missed that one, Ben. I, I was focusing on the flower basket. The Flower Basket Program. Streets O and M. And then Streets Capital. Lodging Tax. Narcotics. And I don't know if that's the drug dog or not, but I'll have to find. That's the last picture I had was. Real Estate Excise Taxes. Again, you know, this is where we do transfers to meet the city's portion if we get grants for some of our streets and parks, capital projects, as well as we've talked about our building capital fund. We've been doing the sweep from the first quarter percent of real estate excise taxes that we collect. That's part of what is going to help support and be able to pay for the debt service associated with the municipal campus phase two, as well as be able to have that reserve of the two and a half years' worth of debt payments in this fund. And then debt service. Again, we are anticipating that if we sell the debt for the municipal campus here in 2023, we will start making payments in 2024. And Mr. Mayor, if I may, I'm going to put a plug in. We're actually going to have the bond underwriter here at the November Finance Human Resources Committee to talk about the process that it takes to begin the debt process. So debt issuance process, so to start that, start it off.
Thank you.
General CIP. So we have now both the General CIP Fund and the Municipal Campus Building Fund. General CIP Fund is for things that aren't necessarily only city use. So for example, when we were working with those grants in the legislative proviso on the Boys and Girls Club, we accounted for that in this fund. We have the 330 Fund for our city facilities and for our capital maintenance that we need. There are no current projects scheduled in this fund, but we still will maintain the fund because you never know what may come up, so. I will point out, there is no longer a North Kelsey Fund, since that was paid off back in 2020. So I mentioned the City Buildings Capital Fund. We've already gone through parks and streets. So this leaves us our last capital fund here until we get to the utilities. And then again, I mentioned earlier, the utility rates. Council did adopt the resolution back in 2019 that readjusted how much we raised rates on each of the utilities based on what the prior schedule was. And this is still very true. If we were sticking to the prior schedule, the increases would actually be higher than where we are at now. So, and a lot of that has to do with not raising rates at all on sewer. And for those, just as a reminder, we actually had decreased sewer rates back in 2019 by two and a half percent. And then we've been able to maintain that lower rate since. And again, the history of all that is in the budget book, beginning on page 87. So Water Utility. You've got the O and M and the Capital Goals and Professional Services here. Sewer. And last but not least, Water. We do have some existing revenue debt. And our debt covenants do require that we maintain a separate reserve bond, fund. We maintain 1.2 times the amount that we need for that year's debt service. We use 2024 to determine what that is. And there's our reserve target. Information Technology. I did tell you, you'd get to see the picture again. Fleet and Equipment. And just as we have City Building Capital Fund, we also have our Facilities O and M. And that is City Proposed Budget. Just a reminder, for the remaining schedule for next Tuesday, we will have the final budget public hearing. I hope we have a little bit more interest than we've seen first two. We will have the first reading of the 2023. We will have the first reading of the two thousand twenty-three Property Tax Ordinance, again, we have to do that annually. Then we'll have the first reading in front of you for the biannual budget itself. And first reading for the Capital Facilities Ordinance. Then scheduled to not till November fifteenth to do final adoption, depending on what comes out of this evening and for first reading. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I am available if there are questions.
All right, thank you very much. Are there any questions for Director Hasser? All right, I don't see any great job with the press, who, Councilmember Hanford?
Got a question, just a comment, I just. As I read through the budget, I was just very impressed as usual. And appreciate how we took the Imagine Monroe objectives. And kind of mirrored them up and, and addressed those issues, so. I love. Great job, thank you.
Thank you. All right, any other questions or comments from staff, I'm sorry, from council? All right, thank you very much, Director. We're going to go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda, that item will be item ten point two. Review of Draft Two Thousand Twenty-three, Two Thousand Twenty-nine Capital Facilities Plan with Director Roberts, so go ahead and. Loop him in, go ahead, Director.
Thank you, Mayor, Jody, is there a chance we could get the presentation up on the screen? It's all right.
I thought we were going to have them imagine a PowerPoint presentation, and then you're going to describe each slide.
I could probably do that, it'll take a while though, you'll be bored. Yeah. In any case, as the mayor stated, this is the first presentation of the two thousand twenty-three through two thousand twenty-nine Capital Facilities Plan. The next slide, please. The plan incorporates Imagine Monroe, as Councilmember Hanford was just talking about, if you look at Imagine Monroe as the starting point, some of the kind of tenants that are contained within that. The healthy, natural, built environment sustaining and improving regional connections, a lively center. Community centered infrastructure, which is huge, it runs throughout all that public works and, and parks does, and then a safe space for all, which is. Another component of actually more, I think, in parks. So as we move to the next slide, the regulatory framework for this plan, so we revisit this plan annually. It's required by the Washington State Growth Management Act that the city have this plan in, in effect. It's not an element of the comprehensive plan, it's more a component, I need to correct that word, but it's a component of the comprehensive plan. That's directly tied to our levels of service that we establish when we develop that plan. So our transportation level of service drives our Capital Facilities Plan, so do our utilities, so there are adopted appendices of the comprehensive plan. The reason why we review it every year is also contained within local code and by local resolution of the council, so we'll talk about that in a minute, chapter twenty-two of MMC. Next slide, please. So the approval process, I wish this happened in less steps, but that's not how it works, so. The mayor develops the recommended budget and capital plan, so we have the new biannual process that we're going through right now. We go to the P three committee, I believe we were there in July, I think, to review the initial draft of it, to get some feedback from the committee. Is there anything that the, the committee would like to see that's just missing or some, some changes or maybe reprioritization? The next step is to go visit the Planning Commission with the committee's recommendation. And gather public input and the purpose of that step at the Planning Commission is actually local cold code and resolution says. We will go to the Planning Commission to solicit public feedback, so we have a public hearing there and completed that step. We now have the presentation of the budget, thank you Becky, for consideration, another option, opportunity for public comment tonight, local preference and state law. Finally, as we move through a couple more meetings here, council will likely adopt the budget and amend the comprehensive plan. And that, well, I'm sorry, adopt the budget and the Capital Facilities Plan and concurrently amend the comprehensive plans, it all happens at the same time. State law, GMA, local code drives that, finally, we will. Let our good friends in community development know that they can contact Commerce and update everything there at the state, that's our final step in the process. And when that happens, it feels really good, so it's a nice touch, finish it out, so two thousand twenty-three Project Summary. Thirty-seven projects in various stages from pre-design all the way out to close out. Something that I think I mentioned at this point, take this opportunity, when we complete a project in the community, so what we talked about earlier tonight, when Madison is finally done. There is then the closeout process, which takes up to a year from the end of a public works project. So there's the lead in, which can take many years, the project itself, which is often the shortest period, and then the closeout, which has to be completed, and there's quite a few steps in that process, so. When the project is done, it's not over for staff. In total, we're talking about thirty-three million in planned expenditures from all of the funding sources listed there below, next slide, please. Here is the funding breakdown, just put that up there so that the, the figures could kind of fit into your head as to how big they are when you look at it all, thirty-three million. Quite a bit out of each of the years there and each fund. Next slide. So the projects, the fun part, right, Municipal Campus Phase Two, the City Hall Administration Wing. Got about a, almost a seventeen million dollar project budget in twenty-three, twenty-four, funded through REIT and bonds. Design is underway at this point in time and construction is expected to begin in mid-two thousand twenty-three. Next slide, Municipal Campus Phase Three, so the Justice Wing, so the police station side. Two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four project budget is seven hundred thousand, the building was built in nineteen ninety-one, assessment, and this part of the project will. Include an assessment of building design and function and architectural programs, space needs, and then what opportunities there are to improve occupant safety. And critical system reliability such as HVAC, you know, the interior piping and things of that nature that are getting a bit obsolescent. Gateway and Wayfinding Signs, not quite done with that, the big stuff is finished, the smaller stuff is actually going to be going in here fairly soon. Our city engineer was out doing locate work, oh gosh, last week was working on that, so. Expect to see some of these things popping up around town, project budget about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, total of eighty-six signs, and we already completed the two gateway monuments, so it's going to be. A nice, you know, second phase to that project. One seventy-seventh Sewer Main Replacement, so if you're looking at the lower left of that picture, that's the Department of Corrections. And then the kind of right side there, upper right side, that'd be about where the bus barn is, chase that down, that pipe is then at capacity, it was identified. And our system plan is needing to be upgraded, we're at the point now where it's time to do it with some of the build out that's occurred around there to the west on Main Street. And anyway, so increased capacity for peak flows, design is underway, we're just about to thirty percent with that one, construction plan for two thousand twenty-three. And annual road maintenance, so the TBD, obviously, the big funding source for our annual road maintenance projects, hopefully, you've seen some of the signs out there where we're completing projects. Putting them up on the side of the road, really trying to advertise that effort and show what a difference it makes in our community, those are really valuable dollars for transportation. We have done many upgrades to sidewalk ramps and definitely increased that community centered infrastructure, giving access to everybody. It also includes our annual pavement striping program, which in the future could tie into traffic calming, because that's a component within our current policy. That is a, a, a component of traffic calming, so we're going to be looking at options for using that in the future. And parks, we are going to go over to our Capital Projects Manager, Ben Swanson.
Great, thank you, so for the, for the Park CIP, we have a number of different projects budgeted for this year. Cadman, obviously, being one of the larger ones, we're still in negotiations with them to get on site to do the environmental analysis, so that one is. Kind of influx until we can actually get on site, do the analysis, ensure that there is no pollution. Then we can start with our phase one, phase two work on the side of actually improving the areas. Our park playground equipment, as we discussed, we have the Blueberry Park Playground. That's will take place just after that sewer, or it's not sewer, stormwater project is done over the Blueberry area. Along with that, we have some additional parks that will be providing upgrades to the playground equipment. River interpretive signs, the Trail System Connectivity Master Plan, which is, is, is going to be a good one. We have a number of different trails, unfortunately, some of those trails fall under different ownership, specifically by HOAs. So, so give us an opportunity to kind of coordinate and look at our overall system, and I know we have some outstanding repairs on trails that actually aren't owned by the city. And so give us a chance to coordinate with some of those neighborhoods. And then also additionally, when we were at the Planning Commission meeting. Planning Commissioners, and you'll see in the packet, actually, three of the planning commissioners voted against the, the CIP this year. And I did have this, this conversation with, at the P three committee, and just wanted to recap it at the council, and so. Their main concerns were over the parks portion of the CIP, and specifically, and are we going to. You want to hold off, Jacob, until we get to the actual layout?
No, that's fine.
Okay, okay, so there were a couple of different projects, specifically the North Hill Area Park that we applied for a, a, a couple of different grants for this year, we didn't rank real high on those. Is, is a priority that's outlined in our CIP and, and at least three of the, the park, park board member, planning commissioners. Felt that a, a park located in the downtown should take some precedence over, over the, the park on the North Hill and a few other projects. And this was really, I think, a, a lack of understanding of process, and so with our, our, our CIPs. We draw these projects out of a, a twenty-year plan, and those plans are adopted by appendices into our comprehensive plan and. And essentially part of the comprehensive plan, and so you have your water plan, sewer plan, and for us, we have our Parks Recreation and Open Space Plan that's part of the comprehensive plan. And so in that, you have twenty years worth of projects that are in there, and that's what our CIP is developed from, we, that's already been reviewed and approved by council. Whether during a, a previous period for the, the pros plan, it was actually just February of, of this year is when it was adopted. With the pros plan, they actually went a step further and identified the project priorities for the next six years in the pros plan. And so when we went to develop our, our CIP, we as in the park staff, it was actually a, a pretty, pretty easy task, we just went into our, the pros plan, which is adopted. Pulled out the projects that were identified and then added those to our, our CIP projects that you'll see in the spreadsheet. So with that, I, I think the, the breakdown came at, at Planning Commission. Wanting to shift around those priorities and not understanding that that was an amendment to the actual comp plan itself, we would have to amend the pros plan. In order to shift those priorities around, and the, the request in front of the Planning Commission wasn't the pros plan, that wasn't what was docketed for our comp plan amendment, it was the. CIP projects and do these comply, meaning are these listed in the pros plan that was adopted again in February? And so I just, I, I think there was some, some breakdown there as far as just roles and responsibilities. As this came forward, however, that being said, with the concerns about a park in the downtown, and I don't know if we can go to the attachment now or wait for later, there's an attachment in your packet. That has a map in there and identifies. Park, current park needs and, and, and future park needs, and so you'll see in your attachment. Within the map, there is a, a, a large asterisk in the downtown area identifying the need for a park there, and it also identifies, it'll be determined during the twenty. Our comp plan update, our two thousand twenty-four comp plan update, which is currently happening, so that will take place, I, I don't want you to think that. It's completely forgotten about, but, but that will happen. Another concern, I think, that was in an email to council was that. That we can't address this for another six years, and to clarify that with our CIP, we, we update it every year, even on a biannual budget, this will be back before council next year. And on the pros plan, we are required by the state to update it every six years, you can do it more frequently than that. It's just we have, have to do it every six years, and so it, it's always open for re-review. The area that I'm hesitant on is, is with this pros plan, we had outstanding public outreach, I mean, it, it, it set a new bar for the city as far as how we conduct outreach. How we communicate with the, the residents even during a pandemic time, where we, you know, sent out mailers to every, every residential unit in the city, both in English and Spanish. We had some great attendance and feedback at our Night Out Against Crime and, and other events like that, so it was a very robust outreach plan that we, we took this in, and so if we were going to. Kind of redo what we were looking at for priorities, I would, I would also recommend, you know, going back again for, for more public outreach, but. Again, it was just adopted in, in February, and so. So with that, I, I, I hope that answers the questions of, I know there's the Planning Commission's recommendation that's in there, and then they, I believe you also received an email noting some concerns about that. One other point I wanted to touch on that, that some of the planning commissioners, their, the term they use was equity. That they were concerned about specifically with the park being located in the North Hill area. That area town is, you know, a higher priced home value up there. And my response to that is, you know, equity has more than, than, than just one lens, we look at it a lot of different ways, and again, if you, if you look at the, the map that's in your attachment. You'll see there is a large open area up there where we acquired the land for the North Hill Park, we just need to build it out now to, to have a neighborhood walkable park for those residents in that area. And with that, I'll, I'll take any questions.
Okay, I don't think, I don't see any questions, thank you very much, up, just one second. Councilmember Kenny, go ahead.
Thanks, Ben, this question is not related to the Planning Commission information, but is on the bullet list. And I'm wondering about the Public Plaza Festival Lot. Is that an identified space or is that just a placeholder for a potential site?
It, it's, at this time, it's not an identified space, it is identified somewhere in the, the downtown area, we did update. We did update our spreadsheet to indicate it wasn't the downtown or that, that we should be looking in the downtown area for it. It does get a little tricky when, when you, you know, purchasing land, you don't want to get too specific and, you know, have the individual, you know, raise the price if you identify a property. And you also don't want to create unnecessary panic if you put a, a pin on someone's property and they're like, wait a minute, this is my house, you know, you're going to buy it, and so. We, you're just generalizing it as in the, in the downtown area at this point.
Do you have a size in mind?
No, not at this time, we'll, we'll, we'll start taking a look at that, this has been identified back in, I think it was initially identified in the two thousand and eight. Downtown Master Plan is when that was, yeah, originally identified, I'd, I'd have to go back to that and see if they, they did identify a size in there. But we don't have like a, a min or max at, at this, at this stage, obviously, you know, needs to, you know, accommodate, accommodate gathering, so it does need to be a, you know, a fairly good sized parcel.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anything else on, on this slide? All right, thank you very much.
Next slide, please, Jody. We're almost home, okay, so starting with, I got his attention, starting with Imagine Monroe. Leads up, leads off of the mayor's budget, goes to the Planning Commission, we gather public input. Council eventually adopts it, the comprehensive plan is amended, then we design, construct and deliver projects, and then finally, our, our operations team maintains the improvement. And we, we get back to where we started, so that concludes the presentation, Mayor, turn it over to you for any questions.
All right, thank you, any other questions from the, from the council? All right, great job pulling that together, great presentation, Director Roberts, and. I don't think there's anything else this evening, so we don't have a need for an executive session. Deborah, do we have anything else this evening?
We don't.
All right, there being no further action or business, the meeting is adjourned unless there's objection, there's the word. We're struggling for the word, all right, we are adjourned, have a great week, everybody.